Thank you. We now move on to Recreation and Cultural Services. It says, "Recreation and Cultural Services."
Anytime I'm ready, you're welcome.
Yeah, I would like to know how we -- when we change to Recreation and Cultural Services.
Well, the budget's always reflected that I'm responsible for the top half and then it goes to municipal archives back to corporate services.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, please go ahead.
We have, quite frankly, just two items on our supplemental request that are both offset by equal amounts of revenue. The first is for a training conference or mini-class conference, which is our operating software. Squimalt has traditionally been a leader in this area within the region, and what we do is to reduce our staff training budgets and sending staff out of town for upgrade training as we go through our software. We host a regional conference with our sister municipalities in the region, and then we invite outside municipalities up high enough to come and join us at a cost-recovery basis. So the $15,000 is for Squimalt to host the conference. There's also $15,000 revenue offset, so the net tax request is zero. Special event development, staff requesting $100,000 in expenditure and subsequent $100,000 in increased revenue, and this is to me Council's strategic priority of special event management. What this is, is hosting events primarily in our parks and at Archie Browning to generate increasing revenues, and part of that is, as I said, identified Council's strategic plan. So there's a net zero benefit to that. The operational items were overtime on staff pay. We were put on notice during collective bargaining in the fall. Staff have removed that align item, and therefore that's no longer on the budget. If there's any questions, those are the two items I have.
Counsel Morrison.
Thank you. Just a general question for the public's benefit. You're not projecting or you're not planning for any membership fitness pass fee increases as part of the 2012 budget?
Your worship, through to Counsel Morrison, if staff at this moment with this proposed budget are not encouraging or recommending fee increases at this moment, however, should Council decide to adjust policy, then we would then be pursuing that as an alternative. The surveys we have done intermunicipally put our programs and service fees directly where we want them to be. They're aggressively priced within the market. On the rental side, we're a little still on the high side, but all the other municipalities are subsequently increasing fees. We have found through operating models that we're better off becoming aggressive on our program side, which is why we're seeing the increase in revenues, is on the program development, not necessarily just on the rental fees and admission prices. But our admission prices and our rental fees are aggressively priced within the current market.
Just sort of the second question too, related to that, is also, 2012 budget does not include any reduction in service times, hours of operation, days of operation. Correct?
Your worship, through to Counsel Morrison, at this moment with the proposed recommendations from Parks and Rec, there is no decreases in core services.
Thank you very much.
Further questions? I would just like to clarify the special event development, and if you can refresh my memory as to whether that was an item that was deferred from last year forward. I thought there was some funding in the past that was to start that process or move forward to that process.
Your worship, in previous budgets, staff have, past two budgets that I've worked here, we recommended a marketing position for special event development. Subsequently, those items have been removed from the budget. Staff are now recommending that this has been done in-house, and I'm taking a quite active role in this. So this is not for salary, it's not for employment. This is to go out and secure events.
Thank you. And the cost recovery is the blaze this year. How long would it take to cost recover?
Your worship, we're anticipating immediate, which is why there's zero impact to the budget. This is for event services and event management and the procurement of such events. So therefore, it's ticket revenue, it's sponsorship revenue, it's all offset. So we are anticipating zero to the tax base.
Great. Thanks very much. Further questions? Sports center, could we go through that?
It's been removed.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, municipal archives, a couple of items here. One is a one-time overtime provision. The archivist does attend quite a few committee meetings, and he's anticipating this year he's going to be quite involved in the centennial celebrations as well. Being a union member, he does get overtime for that, so this accounts for that. Annual conference cost, to date he has not been attending conferences. There are quite a few ones that he thinks would be beneficial for our municipality to be involved, and we would like to take advantage of at least one of those conferences per year. So this will be in addition to the annual core. We had a new software program put in to Archives a couple of years ago called Past Perfect. However, there is ongoing staff training that should be, or it's not ongoing actually, it's a one-time staff training, just to make sure that they're using the software to its full capacity. And the last one is the scanner and printer. The equipment at the Archives office is quite antiquated. The new scanner and the printer would allow them to do better reproductions. There's quite a bit of public demand for copying of the materials there, and their current equipment doesn't really accommodate that very well.
Thank you. Questions, Counsel Morrison?
Just in the BFT, or the position of the archivist, that's a relatively new position. If I remember, if I remember right, I think it's just been recently added to staff in the last couple of years, maybe last couple of budgets?
June 2010, I seem to recall, the current archivist.
Okay. And that is a part, that's a half FTE, is that correct?
Thirty hours per week.
Thirty hours per week, okay. And prior to that, it was always done by a volunteer.
Yes, it was.
So was there any flexibility with FTE hours in that position, rather than in terms of 30 hours versus 20 hours, or? The reason I say is because it is, most of the positions we've had have been doing the FTE equivalent amount of hours for decades, some of them, and this one is so new and somewhat experimental.
I think we would discuss that with the current employee and see if those hours were warranted. I'm not sure if, and he's asking for one-time overtime. I don't know if that's a piece, I mean, he's hired at that point four, point six, or whatever it is, and we would have to discuss that with him if we were to change those conditions.
Counsel Halden.
Thank you, Chair. One comment I might make, and I don't know the whole thing, but I think that the position of archivist is, we require some sort of expertise. I don't think I qualify, and so I think that it's important that we get the right people in there. But I take Counsel Morrison's point, and you know, maybe that's something for us to look at. The other thing I wondered, was that there was ever any revenue opportunities for the archives? So I know that there's a lot of requests coming forward from different people wanting to know about past family members and past events that went on in people's lives. And I know that sometimes there's an extensive amount of research that, whether there's any costs associated with that, above that. And I don't know whether there's any opportunities for us to, you know, gain many revenue, even if it's the cost of a paper for the printing. I don't know that. So I'm just asking out of staff, through Chair to Ms. McCall, who do you know?
We don't know of any opportunities at this point. We'll certainly have the discussion with the archivists and see what's down in other areas.
Thank you. Counsel Murtagh?
Thank you. On the overtime, he's a union member, and he is paid on a contract, or is he paid hourly?
Paid hourly.
Paid hourly.
Any further questions?
Just one, and I know you've already examined it, but I have to ask it anyways. We do have Municipal Archives Trust Fund, and also if this is for extra work related to Centennial, are there other opportunities from where we can recover those funds?
The trust fund is not an option. Compared to the model of government, that trust fund is very specific.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's used for, I believe, for reproduction, repair, those types of things. Actual archives can't use for wages or any other thing.
Okay. I know that some of the work that he has taken on, and I'm very excited about it, is with the Mayor's Golf Tournament, and how it's going to become an historical golfing event, of which he is very well qualified and has significant connections. And the other is our Centennial Ale, and of which he's very well qualified as well. So that's why I'm just, you know, wondering, are there other places within the funds where we can support those? So question asked, and I received my answer, but always good answers. Counsel Murtagh?
Thank you, your worship. I had the same queries on the overtime and the $500, because if you go back to the Centennial Celebration, they've got down Communications Coordinator, $36,000 for 14 hours per week. Why cannot that $500 that we're going to give to the archivists to work for Centennial come onto Centennial?
I don't have a natural, I have the last month of Centennial, but if we could put it there, it's still $500.
Yeah, but the $500 could be rounded into $36,000?
No, $36,000 is an actual salary for the communications coordinator. So the $500 is still on top of that.
So that's for a year's salary, that is it, $36,000?
That's for his salary part-time for the entire year, yes.
For his role in Centennial.
I don't want to get into nerd in a moment, but did you know where I stand on volunteers and people being paid? When that, yeah.
Communications coordinator is a union staff position.
He was given that position by who?
This council.
Counsel?
Yes.
You need to bring it to council or council?
Yes.
Counselors.
It was first in 2011.
Okay, so any further questions on that?
Sorry, just while we're on that talk, my understanding is the Communications Coordinator position is 50%. And the project, sorry, what's the project leader for the Centennial project is 50%?
It's actually, actually, no. The Communications Coordinator is a .6 position, and the other part of the salary, the .4 portion, is quoted to the Centennial Celebration.
Okay. So, and I guess this would be obviously getting into the 2013 budget, but after we're done with this Centennial, it'll go back to .6 Communications Coordinator?
That will come up for discussion on the next worksheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, so we can move on. And we're libraries there, and offsetting reductions of the right side. Okay, we're done. Supplemental, we're the number of stars. So we would like to move on now to the staff requests. And so that is a little bit of a help, I remember?
That's right, it's the one-page sheet. So these are the staff transfer requests that have been included, are being requested in the budget under administration, and this was a good segue into the discussion. This has to do with the Communications Coordinator, and you're absolutely right. Right now, he's in the budget full-time, but .6 of his position is coded to his Communications Coordinator position, and .4, or 14 hours, is coded to the Centennial Committee budget. And the request or the recommendation from staff is at the end of 2012, to have the Communications Coordinator position be a full-time position with 100% of the cost coded to administration. That does not result in an increase to the current budget, but any increases in staffing will always come to Counsel during budget.
Thank you. Counsel Hodgins?
Certainly, I support the need for a full-time Communications Coordinator. I think of all the issues and challenges that we deal with, a significant number of those come back to the need for enhanced communications, improved communications, additional communications, and I see a real struggle currently with part-time position to even post a meeting our needs as an organization to better communicate within the organization, externally to our customers and key stakeholders. So it all comes back to our strategic priorities for me in terms of economic development and all those positive initiatives, and if you're not able to get there because of the absence of communications, and I really believe that we need to, and I would like to get there sooner than later, to a full-time Communications Coordinator for this town. Thank you.
Counsel Morrison.
So we're basically changing the position, because we're going from a .6 Communications Officer to a full-time FTE Communications Coordinator, sorry. And to me, that means we've actually changed the job description, because it's no longer, the old job, sorry, the existing job description is based on .6 hours availability. Full-time position has probably, I'm guessing, a lot more expectations or responsibilities for those experts, because of that additional time. So would that not negate there being a new posting or a new competition for that?
I would expect so, but I will defer the final decision to the discussion with the HR department. I don't believe that that would be the case, but I'm not the expert in labor relations or human resources, so I'll reserve that and have a discussion with the HR manager.
Okay, so prior to that discussion, this assumes that that person would just automatically go to a full-time hours?
This is that assumption, yes.
Further, Counsel?
Counsel will have, sorry, just for the chair, so Counsel will have some input on that, the expansion?
I think any further discussion on this should be in camera. If it's a personality, if you're talking about a specific staff person, and it's not appropriate to have it in the meeting.
Sorry, my intention was to talk about the specific job description, not any individual whatsoever. So just be clear.
Staff, I just need some clarification. Because this position right now is being funded under Centennial for the year 2012.
Right.
Would this not then go into the 2013 budget?
And that's what we're saying. We didn't say, we put, there's no amount under the budget request. There is an amount under indicating that it will become annual core after 2012.
Thank you. Wasn't looking at the boxes.
Which is why the indication is, it would actually not impact the budget amount, the total budget that's for 2012. But it is a change in staffing.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Counsel Ray.
Just to wrap my head around this, so we would still want to approve this to be part of core next year, this year, or can we just leave it at this?
If you want a full-time Communications Coordinator, I understand Counsel Morrison is talking about how would that process work. I think that's a decision that can be made outside of whether you want a full-time Communications Coordinator or not, the details of that. I, well, we wouldn't be recommending this except that looking at Council's strategic priorities, I am not going to be able to resource reaching those priorities without a full-time Communications Coordinator. That includes looking at going paperless and videotaping or recording meetings and all the rest. I need someone to be able to do that. And I would need a full-time person to do that, and we're looking at, we're looking at starting that at the end of the year.
But now we can move on to information technology?
So information technology, you should have a business case document in front of you for that position, and I think if you have any questions, I will try to answer them. Of course, recognizing that I'm not the expert in IT, but I can say that, again, looking at Council's strategic priorities with looking at different forms of communication, when you talk about communication, it usually falls into IT as well. And right now, our IT department has two people in it, and in that report, you'll see the workload that they have on them. And basically, right now, they're barely able to keep things running, never mind doing new initiatives and looking at improving service or taking on new initiatives. And you have to recognize that in the other departmental budgets, for instance, in the Bar Department, when they talk about adding a server to support the iPads, and that's great, we've got the capital cost for that, who's going to support that and look after it after that does add. IT department is a department that's often overlooked, as far as when you increase your business in other departments, their workload increases. And I think Jeremy put together quite a good business case on that position, so we're requesting that that position stay in, or we're recommending it in two of the cases that we put forward tonight.
Thank you. Questions? Counsel Shinbain.
Thank you, your worship. I'm having a little bit of difficulty with this particular one, because first of all, we're committing ourselves to an increase at $68,500 plus benefits and cost of living and everything forever. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I'm also a little bit concerned that I get a recommendation put on my desk, and I'm expected to make a decision about that in a couple of minutes. I'm not prepared to do that. I feel this needs more discussion, and I think the item should be flagged.
Thank you. I was going to suggest that I would like to be able to read this. I certainly support the concept, because I know how hard those guys are working up there. I provide them with a lot of extra workload. But I would like to be able to read the report. So what is the sense of the rest of the council? So we'll flag it for consideration and try and get through this report.
Point of information, when we do flag it, have the discussion, we'll be able to have a closer analysis of the job description.
Well, I think by going through this report, we'll have a better understanding as to what the request is all about and why the business case is there for it. That being said, if we're flagging this, and we are going to probably defer it for a decision until tomorrow, it may affect the process as we go forward in terms of, would we be delaying anything in a greater picture? No? Good, thanks. Counsel Hodgins?
I certainly support the flag, and from my position, I would like to have a conversation around to what extent we could contract IT services, understanding we have some full-time support now. So I think that's just, it's an appropriate conversation to be had.
Thank you. Again, are these HR issues that we perhaps can't answer tonight, and perhaps should be in a different?
In camera.
In camera. Yes, thank you. Okay, so we've flagged that one. Counsel Halden.
Just thank you. I just wanted to ask a question for you, to Ms. Hurst. Just in regards of the dollar value that's there, does that include benefits, or is benefits in top of that, and we're looking at another 22%?
It includes benefits. No, includes benefits. So the third, right, you go to the bylaw? So the third request, right now we have bylaw enforcement as well at .6 position, so that we have that person for part-time during the week, and again, looking at strategic priorities and the backlog. There is a short memo on that one as well for the backlog. We currently have 156 bylaw enforcement issues, because we have a lack of resources to do those in a timely manner. So this will be actually the third or fourth time that this request has come forward to Council at budget.
Counsel Hodgins?
Thank you, through the chair. Well, certainly based on the feedback, comments that I've received from the residents, there would appear to me to be a definite need for a more actively involved and engaged bylaw enforcement system, and that's going to require full-time to get to where we expect it to be as a council, in my opinion, and to get feedback from the residents.
Thank you. Other comments? Counsel Morrison?
Is it fair to say that in some ways, this position would almost pay for itself or finance, be self-financing in that the more bylaw enforcement we do, the more, you know, tickets we can issue and penalties we can, bring our community across the community up to code in various aspects of violation?
It won't make some people happy, but I don't think it would ever fully fund itself, but you're absolutely right, there's a revenue offset to having more time to follow up on the bylaw issues. A lot of bylaw issues now, and you know, you can vote and write the tickets, but unless you spend the time forcing those or following up on them, it's kind of irrelevant.
So I mean, the bigger problem is we have a lot of violations that aren't being monitored or enforced.
We need some monitoring.
And the upside of enforcing them is that we would get some revenue from that, but it'd be justified revenue.
Absolutely.
Right. Second comment, I just wondered if the CEO wanted to comment at all on shared services with bylaw officers? We have very similar bylaws across the region and equally qualified individuals that could enforce bylaws across jurisdictions and on a more frequent basis, that what each of us individually separately can do. So I wonder if you would comment on that?
Yeah, I guess there's between shared services and also being a good neighbor and helping out. We've done both. We've had shared services with View Royal when it came to building inspection. For instance, a few years ago, we used to have two building inspectors, junior building inspector, senior building inspector. The junior building inspector really only worked for us part-time. We had him on our payroll full-time, but then we had a cost-sharing agreement with View Royal, and that person would go to View Royal and help out with building inspections. But then it became, after a few years, it became apparent that, or View Royal indicated, they had enough work for their own full-time person, so that agreement sort of came to an end. Until recently, what we had, our part-time building, our bylaw enforcement person was also working in View Royal on contract for the other two days that he wasn't working here. So you can sort of, I guess, say that that was shared services, but not in the same way that we've done it before. We also have done backup work for each other. If the building inspector or bylaw enforcement officer in View Royal has been away, we've backfilled if we had the time to do that. That sometimes is difficult if you find yourself in the situation that we currently find yourself, where we have our own backup of 156 complaints. It's kind of hard to do sharing on a continual scheduled basis if you have so much work for your own employees. So we try to do that, and we have discussions about that on a regular basis. So I absolutely agree that, I mean, that's part of what we have to do, is talk about those shared services when we can.
Door's open.
Yes, absolutely.
Counsel Shinbain.
Thank you, your worship. Give me the staff. I'm looking at this. I'm looking at this, increasing this position, and I have some concerns, simply because of the way things are done out there. I think this is an opportune time rather than increasing it right now, even though there might be a backlog. Because my question would be, is the backlog on building inspections, or is the backlog because we let people a bunch of parking tickets? So, I'm not 100% sure that the increase is worthy. I'm more of the opinion that we need to look at this, and this is probably an opportune time to do it, is to maybe split it up. That building inspection is one particular type of bylaw enforcement, and all the other things like parking in front of fire hydrants and what have you, is a different type of thing. And perhaps that could be contracted out, as it's done through many of the municipalities in this area, everything from Victoria to Old Bay. So, I think I would have difficulty supporting an increase in here until there had been a much greater study done, and also looking into what the other municipalities are doing for the, if I may use the phrase, ticket enforcement, as opposed to building inspection enforcement. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilor Hunderby.
Thank you. So, my question is more of a general nature. So, on my page, I have things in black, and I have things in blue. So, for the numbers that are in black, can I also assume that for the 3.61% scenario, the things that are in black are also still for that one?
Yes, if you see no red on the page, it's still included in that second scenario.
Thank you. So, I have another question. I might just wait until we're completed, and then I'll come back to it if I may.
Completed this page?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions around bylaw?
Could we flag, were we going to flag a bylaw officer?
I haven't heard that yet.
I would like to have it flagged.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We will flag that one as well. Thank you. Parks.
Your Worship, the supplemental staff increases for a additional summer student in our parks maintenance division. As previous council was aware, when they did the Craigflower expansion, the additional islands and the rain gardens, as well as some additional park property, growing season May through September is, of course, a great concern, making sure that the grass is cut and the flowers are, and weeds are removed, is one of the highest areas of concern for residents that we receive from calls on. We have four summer students currently, staff requesting a fifth. Instead of increasing our regular contingent, we find the summer students to help with the manual labor. It is quite beneficial to the department. So, we're requesting $22,800, which is the cost of a summer student as a general labor for the year of September.
Thank you. Question, Councilor Morrison.
I'm not even sure about the legalities of my question or not, but my question, are we allowed to put a condition on these student positions, that they are squamult students, squamult residents? I mean, they're such a small number, and I don't want this to sound the wrong way, but I'd hate to see these funds go towards supporting a student from Oak Bay or San Antonio as opposed to our own students.
Your Worship, through to Councilor Morrison, because it's not a grant, this is a legal employment contract, we are restricted under the human rights legislation to ensure that we're not discriminatory across the board. But we do have a very detailed selection process to ensure that we hire the best candidates possible for squamult.
Thank you.
Question around hiring additional students made to September, so those are summer months. Why aren't we putting it in the annual core if we keep considering this every year?
It's not, it's an annual core request, because we have four traditionally, with the fact that we've just retained and accepted through completion of the Craigflower Phase Two project, all of those additional islands, because it's now a core, an annual core, there are no further core requests, based on the current inventory of our park system.
So, as of next year, we would have five, and then if we wanted an additional, we would request again?
It'd be a new core, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep building islands and putting grass on our land.
Thank you. Sedums are very helpful, eh?
They are.
Any other questions?
Seeing none, we are at the end of the staff request. Oh, Councilor Hunderby wanted to do a follow-up.
Yes, thank you. So, through you two, Ms. First, could you, if you wouldn't mind, just walk us through this last page around the staffing request? So, we've got budget requests of $80,198, annual core increases of 155,488, it's almost double. And so, I'm sort of looking through quickly, and I'm sort of struggling here. So, I'm just wondering if you could just pick up this reds for me, so that I better pull this together.
Okay, so first, to deal with the difference between budget and core, your budget request this year, obviously, partial year. So, your annual core cost is an annualized cost for anything that's been prorated for a partial year. I think that explains that, and that was your next question? And then, the color coding or how that works?
No, that was fine. It was the partial cost versus the annualized cost. And that, we will see it rolled over into core for next year. We will not see it come as forward as supplemental. We'll just see it into our core budget.
Assuming it was approved.
Yes, assuming it's approved.
Right. Thank you. Councilor? We are at a significant juncture in these discussions, in that we move now to capital requests, which is fairly hefty document. And so, my suggestion would be, for your consideration, is that we complete the discussion other than our in-camera for tonight, where we are at at this time, and go to capital tomorrow night with fresh minds, and be able to get right through it, and then go to our flagged items in a holistic manner tomorrow, when we've looked at everything, recognizing that they, one is from one budget and the other has one impact and the other doesn't. So, I put that out for your consideration at this time. Second? All those in favor?
That we're going to move on now to the public input, and then we will go to our...
And any capital items that we want to flag will be done tomorrow, and we talked about right after, then we'll go back.
And then, perhaps, if we have enough time tomorrow night, we go through all the flags.
Okay.
And if we need more time with those, we take more time.
Okay. So, you're going to tell them a question?
I'm going to follow the question on that, yes.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Non-motion is heard. Okay. We now move on to public input. Are there members of the public that wish to speak? Please come forward, identify yourself. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name an address, please. And thank you for attending.
Your Worship, Councilor, Robert Hughes calls 16 miles squamult. To pose a brief, I know we haven't covered off, we haven't come to the budget line on speeding pumps for old squamult buildings, but as the subject was raised this evening, I just wanted to put a record that such things are true. When our committee, Tony Khan and Jill Rosen and myself, went to the engineering manager, Bill Wilder, they've seen our system that had been pre-existing designing time down to 1997. And when we realized that, we thought it would be prudent to propose that be reconstituted. And that's where the speed pumps came into record, they were budgeted that time. Interestingly, at $1,500 per minute, today, they're $20,000. So, you see the cost of delay on these kinds of things, right? This is up for discussion, what's the solution? There, we feel, a number of us feel, it's a bit of urgency, but that's not for this place, and I just wanted to highlight that. But we also thought it was, you know, as I said, a cost saving to look at that plan. That plan is, I guess, I can understand costs, $40,000, that's a study 50 years ago. So, by delaying, my only concern is that the additional cost of just the distribution to... Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak?
Hi, I'm DeShawn Lethal from 999 Wordsley.
And have you had a handout for us?
Yes, I do.
We spoke, we were going to, it's a capital item, so we were going to do the handout. Wanted, you were available for tomorrow, so we wanted you to speak tonight, but we're going to do the handout tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
And a picture for a thousand words. The neighborhood watch on Wordsley Street is really concerned about the pedestrian safety. And we're absolutely thrilled that the engineering department has made a proposal for the first time in history of this one, to put a sidewalk on Wordsley. From discussions I've had with their department, it seems that their solution is to put a sidewalk on the north side of Wordsley Street. And my opinion is that a sidewalk on the north side of Wordsley Street won't solve the pedestrian safety problems for three reasons. And the first is, human consciousness always finds the best route, the easiest, shortest route to their destination. And the easiest, shortest route to the destination that the people use is on the south side of the street. So, they would not go up the hills to go out of their way to go to the shortest destination. And if that sidewalk on the north side was there, it would also create an additional safety problem in terms of channeling all the pedestrians to cross the intersection at the blind corner between Lamson and Wordsley Street. And I can't see cars zooming up Lamson, trying to go up the hill along Wordsley, stop there and let pedestrians cross, stop on Lamson to let them cross. So, point one is that sidewalk on the north side would not accommodate the human consciousness of the shortest route to their destination, which is the plaza, and it would create additional problems. The second point, that was the second point, that was first and second point. The third point is that if a sidewalk is, in my opinion, the sidewalk is built on the north side, in the long run, it's going to cost twice as much, because in the long run, a sidewalk will have to be built on the south side. And that's, the sidewalk on the south side is the one that's going to be used. So, if one is on the north side, eventually, one will have to be put on the south side too. And so, I'm wondering if, in the process of the council and the staff, if there's, I don't know how it works, is it like, yes, we vote for it, no, we don't vote for it, it's out of budget, or if it's, oh, okay, well, let's look at an alternate solution for this year within, and maybe the solution is to do harder bit, or something like that. I think the reason why, in conclusion, I think the reason why the engineering department picked the north side is because it's the cheaper side to build on. And the situation on the south side costs a bit more, but it needs the south side to solve the safety problems of the pedestrians.
Thank you. Staff, just a question for clarification. This is within budget discussion tomorrow night, is it, on the calendar?
And we've got a handout, we'll give that to you tonight, so that you can digest it before the discussion.
Okay. Do we have any staff report as to the recommendation and costs, et cetera?
We have directors here who speak to it.
Mr. Director, are you prepared to speak to it tonight, or do you want to do it tomorrow night?
I can give you some high-level views, so you can roll it over till that time. The line item is sitting under the capital sidewalk program, so it won't be, won't see something that says Wordsley, it's under the capital sidewalk program. My understanding is, is when this, that program was put forward, the two main parameters that was looked at was how do we increase our conductivity in our sidewalk network, and how can we do it for the lowest dollar possible? Those were the two main criteria that was brought before the council at the time. They endorsed those two, and therefore, those were the design parameters put forward. If council feels that those aren't the parameters they want to go with, money fixes everything. There would be an increased cost to put it on the south side, because there is a rock up propping on the south side that we would have to go through. To what that increased cost would be, I cannot tell you, because we did not do a cost estimate on it. I'm assuming at least double to what you see in the budget where we are now. The blasting part of it and the stairs that are associated with, without actually looking at it, I can't give you a better number at this time. But again, if council decides that's the more appropriate side, again, like I said, money fixes everything.
Thank you. So, my question for clarification is that this is under the sidewalk fund, but it isn't the only item under the sidewalk fund. Is that right? It's sort of buried in the...
Well, no, the general heading, when you look under the capital projects, is, it is on page two of five, under the general heading sidewalks, sidewalk construction program 2010 to 2018. There, you'll see for prior year, 35K.
Yeah.
That is for the sidewalk along the east side of Sioux Place. And the 22,000 is for the sidewalk on the north side of Wordsley.
Okay, so, it is actually a certain allocation right here, and that's under the supplemental line item.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak?
Laura America Allen, could you do the, we've just got a new budget, just another centennial taking place today. Oreo cookies are 100 years old. Canada consumes 25% of their production.
Wow. I'll just add a little anecdote to that. We actually did a little video congratulations to the Oreo cookies. I did, with Ron, what's Ron's last name, from Parkton Ave. And it was fun. But I gather something happened to his camera, and the film was not able to be sent, but it was a lot of fun doing it. So, we sent them a card, I think, instead.
Photo op.
And we did the photo op, yes, we did. We all had a cookie.
Some of it is a photo.
So, thank you, thank for pointing that out. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak?
John Neuwirth, 28th Street. I'd just like to say, I think you've done a great job tonight. Well, maybe I'm just saying that I'd also like to suggest that you don't count on not spending all this centennial money quite yet. I think there might be an opportunity to put out some more banners, certainly along Craigflower. I don't see it as a huge expense, because I think we cut the banners, hopefully, as some supports for the poles. If we got the poles, it's just a matter of putting the banners, the support on them. So, hopefully, that's something coming up that we can make happen.
Can you clarify what poles, John?
On Craigflower, between Telacom and Hart Street, there's light poles, just light poles. Not the poles on the hydro, there's a specific pole with a label. I'm assuming it shouldn't be a problem, because the poles are metal, and I can't see anyone wanting to climb them legitimately, maybe not. And it seems to me that if we put better supports on that, and put some banners on it, and that would perhaps integrate the area from Hart Street to Telacom with the area from Telacom to Admiral's, which now does have banners, and we'll have short-range lights functioning on it. We've got the lights, it just doesn't apply. So, it's something I think we could consider, shouldn't be a big expense, but if there's money in the centennial fund, great, let's go.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak? Are there other members of the public that wish to speak?
Councilmember, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Nick, I'm outside 616, constant. I just wanted to make a comment regarding to the bylaw enforcement officer. Just a quick point to note, as staff had noted, there is a backlog. We've had a couple of issues, I've seen a lot just in the last couple of months, residents against trouble with squirrels. I know we've had issues with regulations of homes to people dumping, for example, leaving items on the side of the street, et cetera. I think it's important and I'm glad to see, especially with Counselor Shinbain talking about looking at alternatives, about addressing the issue, during your deliberations, taking into consideration that with a full-time bylaw enforcement officer, you have presence. With presence, with confidence, community, and with confidence in the council to show that if rules, regulations that pass can actually be enforced. If it cannot be enforced, then though people might be violating bylaws, if there's no enforcement, there's really no way to find it. And of course, as Counsel Morrison had to make up, there's a great potential for that to be taken behind that. But more importantly, it does help to act these and to fight squirrels within this council as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, thank you. Any other members of the public that wish to speak? Any members of the public that wish to speak? No happy faces? Any members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing none, I will call the motion for adjournment. Move to recess. Pardon me, we're going to move in camera. I need a motion to move it in camera. If you could, please, and then I'll have somebody move it.
The council holds a special in-camera council meeting on March the 6th, 2012, commencing at 9:05, 9:10.
Nine o'clock.
Pursuant to section 91G of the community charter, litigation or potential litigation effective municipality, and section 91C, labor relations or other employee relations. And at the notice of special council meeting, be waived pursuant to section 127 sub-4 of the community charter and that the public be excluded.
Thank you. Linda, did you move that?
Yes, we'll move. Very good.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. Please feel free to come back again another day, tomorrow night. And there is more public input next week as well.